So let's call the meeting to order, yeah. Roll call please.
Mrs. Cochran?
Here.
Mrs. Coons?
Here.
Ms. Snyder?
Here.
Ms. Anderson?
Here.
Mr. Ray?
Here.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Excuse me. Is there a motion to excuse this evening?
I'll make a motion to excuse Mr. Strattner.
Thank you. There's a second.
I'll second.
Thanks, Ann. Thank you. Roll call please.
Mrs. Coons?
Yes.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Ray?
Yes.
Mrs. Cochran?
Yes.
Okay, we're looking next for a motion to accept minutes from October 3rd, 2022, council meeting as presented and not read, please.
I'll make a motion to accept minutes from October 3rd, 2022, council meeting as presented and not read.
I'll second.
Thank you, Sam. Thank you, Heather. Any discussion? Roll call please.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Ray?
Yes.
Mrs. Cochran?
Yes.
Mrs. Coons?
Yes.
Okay. We're looking next for a motion to accept purchase orders from October 1st, 2022 to October 14th, 2022 totaling $8,721.50 as presented and not read, please.
I'll make a motion to accept purchase orders from October 1st, 2022 to October 14th, 2022 totaling $8,721.50 as presented and not read.
I'll second.
Thanks, Laura. Thanks, Sam. Any discussion? Roll call please.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Ray?
Yes.
Mrs. Cochran?
Yes.
Mrs. Coons?
Yes.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Thank you. We're looking next for a motion to accept bills from October 1st, 2022 to October 14th, 2022 totaling $154,356.65 as presented and not read, please.
I'll make a motion to accept bills from October 1st, 2022 to October 14th, 2022 totaling $154,356.65 as presented and not read. I'll second.
Thanks, Laura. Thanks, Heather. Any discussion? Roll call please.
Mr. Ray?
Yes.
Mrs. Cochran?
Yes.
Mrs. Coons?
Yes.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Okay, we're moving into the reading of ordinances and resolutions, please.
Resolution number 7205-2022, a resolution accepting the amounts and rates and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the Summit County Fiscal Officer. Be it resolved by the Council of the Village of Lakemore, Ohio. Section 1, Council hereby authorizes the amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission. Council authorizes the necessary tax levies and certify them to the Summit County Fiscal Officer. Section 2, a copy of the tax levy certification is attached tier 2 and made part hereof as so fully written herein. Council understands that the Village of Lakemore's official certificate of estimated resources for 2023 will be sent prior to January 1st, 2023. Section 3, it is hereby found and determined that all formal actions of this council concerning and relating to the passage of this resolution were adopted in an open meeting of this council and that all deliberations of this council on any of its committees that resulted in such formal action were in meetings open to the public in compliance with the law. Section 4 of this resolution shall be in effect on and after the earliest period of law by law. Resolution number 7212-2022, a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Summa Care for employee health insurance coverage and an HRA with health equity from November 1st, 2022 through October 31st, 2023. Now therefore be it resolved by the Council of the Village of Lakemore, County of Summit, State of Ohio. Section 1, the mayor is hereby authorized to enter into a contract with Summa Care for employee health insurance coverage of Summa Care Plan 709-3060C with VTG, RX Plan, and an HRA with health equity from November 1st, 2022 through October 31st, 2023. The Fiscal Officer is further authorized to pay out monthly premiums related to the contract. Section 2, pursuant to existing village policy, no full-time employee shall be eligible to participate in the health insurance plan offered by the village. Section 3, a copy of the renewal insurance policies attached tier 2 and made part hereof as so fully written herein. Section 4, this resolution is declared to be an emergency measure necessary for the immediate preservation of the public health, safety, and welfare of the citizens of the Village of Lakemore as the current plan ends October 31st, 2022. Therefore, this resolution shall be in full force and effect, immediately upon its adoption and approval by the mayor of the Village of Lakemore. Ordinance number 1792-2022, an ordinance accepting the dedication of streets and utilities within the Hidden Lake Estates Phase 7 subdivision for public purposes, setting performance and maintenance guarantees therefore and providing for immediate enactment. Whereas TWL, Hidden Lake LLC, the owner, and/or their designated representative have presented a plat subdividing certain property owned by them within the Village of Lakemore, Ohio, and whereas the planning commission in the village has approved such subdivision, and whereas TWL, Hidden Lake LLC, and/or their designated representative desire to dedicate a certain portion of said subdivision land as public streets in the Village of Lakemore, Ohio, and whereas this council deems that the dedication of such streets would serve the interests of the village. Now therefore be it ordained by the Council of the Village of Lakemore, County of Summit, State of Ohio. Section 1, that a portion of Hidden Lake Boulevard, Stan Stone of the Avenue, and Stafford Drive as depicted and set forth in the subdivision plat of Hidden Lake Estates Phase 7, I hereby accept it and dedicate it for public use along with associated storm sewers, water lines, and wetland area. Section 2, that the acceptance of section 1 herein is conditional upon the owner paying total general improvement costs, including but not limited to storm sewers, storm water detention, and wetland area, sanitary sewers, water lines, streets, curbs, gutters, sidewalks, street lighting, and all other necessary improvements holding the village harmless therefrom. Section 3, that the acceptance in section 1 herein is further conditional upon the execution of a bond or irrevocable letter of credit in the sum of $115,000 for general improvement excluding sidewalks to the Village of Lakemore, guaranteeing the completion of said streets and improvements as set forth in section 1 herein on or before 18 months from the effective date of this ordinance in accordance with the standards and specifications of the Village of Lakemore and the County of Summit, Ohio. Section 4, that the acceptance in section 1 herein is further conditional upon the execution of a bond or irrevocable letter of credit in the sum of $10,000 guaranteeing the completion of sidewalks within six months of final building inspection for each individual lot created therein, but no event later than on or before 36 months from the effective date of this ordinance in accordance with the standards and specifications of the Village of Lakemore. Section 5, the owner has deposited the sum of $7,500 with the Village of Lakemore ERA/CR account to cover the necessary costs of inspection, checking of plans and plat, checking of construction, and any other necessary inspections of the village in connection with the construction of said streets and in the installation of any improvements therein. TWL, Hidden Lake LLC, and/or their designated representative shall be furnished an itemized account of such necessary expenditures by the village and shall, in the event that such is necessary, reimburse the village for any additional costs properly incurred in addition to the sum originally deposited or shall receive from the village in the event that the necessary costs are less, a refund of the balance remaining of the sum originally deposited. Section 6, that in addition to all their sums, TWL, Hidden Lake LLC, and/or their designated representative has deposited the sum of $500 with the Village of Lakemore to provide for installation of street signs not purchased and installed by TWL, Hidden Lake LLC, and/or their designated representative. TWL, Hidden Lake LLC, and/or their designated representative shall be furnished an itemized account of such necessary expenditures by the village and shall, in the event that such is necessary, reimburse the village for any additional costs properly incurred in addition to the sum originally deposited or shall receive from the village in the event that the necessary costs are less, a refund of the balance remaining of the sum originally deposited. Section 7, that the acceptance set forth in section 1 herein is further conditional upon the execution of a bond or irrevocable letter of credit to the Village of Lakemore by TWL, Hidden Lake LLC, and/or their designated representative in the sum of $100,000 guaranteeing the maintenance of said roads listed in section 1 within the subdivision, including storm sewers, storm water detention facilities, sanitary sewers, water lines, streets, curbs, gutters, street lighting, and other improvements excluding sidewalks across open space areas for a period of two years following the completion and acceptance of the construction of said general improvements. Section 8, that the acceptance set forth in section 1 herein is further conditional upon the execution of a bond or irrevocable letter of credit to the Village of Lakemore by TWL, Hidden Lake LLC, and/or their designated representative in the sum of $5,000 guaranteeing the maintenance of said roads listed in section 1 within the subdivision for sidewalks across open space areas for a period of two years following the completion and acceptance of the construction of said general improvements. Section 9, that it is further conditioned to the acceptance set forth in section 1 herein, TWL, Hidden Lake LLC, and/or their designated representative shall deposit with the Department of Public Services of the Village of Lakemore the original traceings or approved milars of the improvement plans, all of which shall become the property of the Village of Lakemore. In addition, record drawings and milar and electronic or auto guide format and related data shall be deposited with the Village, or the Department of Public Services upon completion of construction. Section 10, that by the dedication of said roads listed in section 1 for public use as streets described in section 1 herein, TWL, Hidden Lake LLC, and/or their designated representative do for themselves agreeing and covenant that they shall pay all special assessments on such parcels herein dedicated and hold the village harmless therefrom. Section 11, that it is further conditioned to the acceptance set forth in section 1 herein, TWL, Hidden Lake LLC, and/or all titled owners making the conveyance shall provide to the Village of Lakemore a title guarantee and lien releases if appropriate for those lands to be dedicated as indicated on the final subdivision plat for Hidden Lake Estates Phase 7. The developer will provide, if requested, inspector reports of existing infrastructure, including but not limited to storm sewer film, sanitary sewer film, and pavement cores. The developer will also attain approvals, permits, easements, et cetera, required by the County of Summit, Ohio, including the Department of Sanitary Sewer Services and the Summit County Conservation District. Section 12, that the Village of Lakemore Fiscal Officer is hereby directed to deliver two certified copies of this ordinance plus any applicable filing fees to the Fiscal Officer of Summit County within 10 days of passage. Section 13, that the mayor and chairman of the planning commission are hereby directed to endorse upon the subdivision plat of Hidden Lake Estates Phase 7 the approval and acceptance of this council of the roads listed in section 1 within the subdivision as dedicated streets of the village. Section 14, that it is found and determined that all formal actions of this council concerning and relating to the adoption of this ordinance were adopted in an opening meeting of this council and that all deliberations of this council on any of its committees that resulted in such formal action were in meetings open to the public in compliance with all legal requirements, including section 121.22 of the Higher Rights Code. Section 15, this ordinance is hereby declared to be an emergency measure necessary for the immediate preservation of the health, safety, and welfare of the citizens of the Village of Lakemore, Ohio. Therefore, this ordinance shall go into effect immediately.
Thank you, Tracy. Okay. We'll move into the mayor's report. We probably, I think we, I feel like we have a lot to announce tonight, so I'll be brief with my announcements. I want to remind everyone that the Lakemore Food Pantry will operate this Wednesday, that's October 19th, at 5:00 PM at Lakemore United Methodist Church. I also would like to announce that the Lakemore United Methodist Church is having a very large rummage sale Friday, October 21st, and Saturday, October 22nd. That's this coming weekend. And also, there is an unskating party at Springfield Lake Roller Inc. at 6:00 PM on the 26th. That's Wednesday, the 26th, 6:00 PM. Everything is free. It is for, primarily for children and families with special needs, I guess. It is one of two times during the year that children with, in wheelchairs or people in wheelchairs and walkers and such are going to be allowed to be on the floor, and everything's covered. Admission and skates, and there's going to be a pizza party that's free. I know our Rotary Club is donating drinks, so it's going to be quite a fun, fun night for students. And again, it's called the Unskating Party. It's one of two nights a year that they do this. Springfield Lake Roller Inc. at 6:00 PM on Wednesday, the 26th of October. And with that, I'll pass it off to the council report. Mrs. Cochran?
Thank you. I'm very happy and very proud to announce that our police department has recently received not one, but two grants. And I'm going to tell you a little bit about those grants, and I hope that I'm speaking accurately about them because getting them kind of back to back, I'm a little bit maybe confused about them. But the first grant that we received, I believe, was called the ARPA grant?
ARPA Retention Grant.
Okay. Thank you. And it is a two-year grant. And with that two-year grant, we received $125,000. And with that, we get a full-time police officer. And that is a full-time patrolman, something that we don't have here. I mean, we've, we have a full-time chief, a full-time sergeant, and a full-time resource officer that the school pays for. But this will be our first full-time officer that will be out there patrolling. So we get that, and that's a two-year grant that we're going to get. And that includes the salary, the benefits, correct?
Mm-hmm.
For two years. And that starts after the first of the year. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And then after we got that news, we were, we are awarded a, the COPS grant. And that is around $300,000. And that is a three-year grant. And that starts immediately, and that is another full-time officer. And so we're so excited about that. And I just wanted to thank, there's so many people to thank for this because, I mean, the mayor, Tracy Fast, I think Megan, you were in on it, the chief.
And Maria Domingo.
Well, Maria, yeah. I was going to get to Maria.
Yeah.
Maria, the officers. Besides the officers, there was, I mean, I personally went around to most of the businesses in Lakemore and asked for a letter of support and received, in fact, Maria, who was Maria Domingo, was, I think that was our first time that we actually went outside the box and, and got a grant writer for this. And I was a little bit skeptical at the beginning, but she did a fantastic job working in connection with all of us. And she did a great job, but she was amazed about what support we got from the businesses in Lakemore.
Absolutely.
She couldn't believe how many of them. And I, I don't remember now, I kept the letters, but we have, oh, probably over 20 different businesses that sent letters of support for the police department and why we needed to get full-time. One of the reasons, it's like a rotating door, you know? Our officers, they come here, they learn the job, and they get to be where they, they get to 26-years-old, they no longer have insurance, and they leave. After we had our meeting with the chief about this, we got another resignation coming up. Another officer was offered a full-time job, so this will give us some stability. But anyhow, I could go on and on about how excited I am about this, but I'm looking that this is going to be great things for us. So I'm just real proud of the department and very thankful, very blessed that we got these grants. And that's all I have.
Amen.
Amen, yes.
Thanks, Laura. And thanks, you guys. Nikki, you're up.
Hi. Well, I just have the Halloween stuff. That was great.
It is great, miss.
You really, you really set me off to just, you know? No, that is really wonderful. You can't be mad at that, can you? There's, there's so much to be happy about, so thank you for everyone that worked on that.
Amen.
Okay. So Halloween is right around the corner, and Saturday, October 29th, we are having a Halloween party at the village. We're going to have our annual Halloween costume contest. It starts from 3:00 to 5:00 this year. A little different that we did it before in the past. We would come early and then you'd go home, and then it would be trick-or-treat. Well, this year, we've kind of wanted it to glide together, so have the kids come down at 3:00. We'll have the candy bags to pass out. We'll have the Halloween contest, and then our fire department is going to be selling concession, hot dogs, chips, stuff like that. So perfect way to feed the kids and then send them to trick-or-treat. And the Village of Lakemore's trick-or-treat is going to be from 5:00 to 7:00 PM. So make sure you turn your light on, and that's it for me. Oh, and also, if you would like to donate any candy for our event, please drop any candy off at the municipal building. We'd be glad to take it. And that's all I have. Thanks, guys.
Thank you, Nikki.
And to add to that, the fire off, or the fireman is doing the hot dogs and concessions in lieu of the normal pancake breakfast.
Yes, a little different. We used to come earlier in the day, but this week we're kind of...
Coming and going, where's the pancake?
No pancakes this year. We're going to give the kids some hot dogs and send them out to trick-or-treat.
And adults.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Whoever wants them. It's a, you know, a small fee for concession.
Yeah.
I'm sure they're not going to charge too much for a hot dog.
A dollar.
Yeah. So yeah, come see us. It's going to be a fun time. I can't wait.
Thank you, Nikki.
You're welcome. Thanks, Heather.
Okay. On the same note of Halloween, on Wednesday, October 26th, from 5:00 to 6:00 in conjunction with our local library, the Springfield Lakemore Branch, there's going to be a boo-bash at Lakemore Plaza, and many merchants are participating, and there'll be candy and entertainment, and it's always been a good event so far. And that's Wednesday, October 26th, from 5:00 to 6:00. And as always, I'd like to thank Channel 1023, Frank, Jim, and Denny for covering our local meetings and other community events. And their schedule's up on the Springfield website, or it's running on the channel. And as always, if you can think of an event that would be interesting or nice to be covered, let one of your local government officials know, and we'll pass the word along to them. And right now, on Channel 1023, our Friday night concerts with Dance Fever, a car, from the Car Show by the Lake program, and a Springfield Board of Education meeting, a Township Trustees meeting, and a Lakemore Council meeting. And thanks again for all the coverage and reporting. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Ann. Thank you.
That's all.
Heather, you're up.
All righty. The next council meetings will be November 7th and November 21st, each at 7:00 PM.
November already?
I know, right? Right, it's in November. Yeah, sorry.
Sam, you're up.
All right. So, I got a couple. So the next council workshops are going to be the 25th of this month and the November 16th. Those are both at 6:00 PM. Now, I think the leaves are full, dead and dying, so I just want to remind everybody not to rake or blow those into the roadways or waterways because those will directly affect the lake. And, you know, we're really trying to clear up. I know that we've seen some practice, and we just want to keep it going. We didn't touch on it last meeting, I don't believe, but I did want to just mention, that way it's out there. Kimball should have sent everybody a letter about October 1st. We, they were asking all of our residents to just set out their cans by 7:00 AM instead of the 8:00 AM. Doesn't mean that they're going to collect them right at 7:00. I know, like, today, I kind of put mine out at like 10:00 because I saw the neighbors didn't do it, and they were a little bit late, but they were just asking. I think Kimball just comes out a little bit earlier, so I know they sent a letter to everybody. I know I got one, but I just want to put it out there. I'm in a public forum. That way, you know, you guys can be ready. And then I think it is next week, Turkey Fest, right?
Right. That's why I got to cross that off.
Okay, cool. Yeah. I don't know the actual, like, start times of it, but I do know it's next week, next Saturday, right?
Yes. I just had it on here to ask the mayor about it.
Okay, cool.
The Turkey Festival is next Saturday.
The 22nd.
My sixth grader is going to be in it, and I'm here for it. I'm so excited.
Yeah, do you know what time it starts?
I don't have it in front of me. Let me look.
I tried to go on their website.
Turkey Festival, for sure.
Just seen it.
The 22nd.
The 22th. What time did you think?
I can't remember.
Okay. It seems I can remember.
Ask about it when you get tickets from the school.
Yes.
You can buy them online, too.
I, go ahead.
The other thing that I wanted to, I'm sorry.
No, you're good.
The other thing that I wanted to ask you is the church doing trunk-or-treat this year?
Yes.
That's another thing, okay?
Yeah, Lakemore United Methodist Church is in fact holding trunk-or-treat in the lower parking lot of the church from 5:00 to 7:00 during the traditional trick-or-treat time in Lakemore. Similarly, the Lakemore Lions Club will be posting up right over here by the little park just outside the fire station, and they'll have some cars, some trunks parked, some cars with their trunks filled with candy there for, for the children and those trick-or-treaters that evening. One other thing, we didn't, well, you know what? Congratulations, Sam. Sam got married. Yeah.
Congratulations, Sam.
I want to say congratulations, Sam, on the most beautiful day and a beautiful wedding. Congratulations.
So happy for you, Sam.
Amen. But I wanted to say that. I wanted to inquire, are we having movie night on, on how, on trick-or-treat night?
Yes.
What time? 7:00? 7:30?
Yeah, it would be after trick-or-treat.
Probably like 7:30 then.
Yeah.
At Dodds. Or Waterworks, do you remember?
I don't remember now. I don't remember.
All right.
Close to my Facebook.
I want to say Waterworks.
I want to say Waterworks.
Okay, we are having a scary movie night.
It's going to be the original Halloween movie.
Oh, the original Halloween movie.
That is awesome.
Around 7:30 after trick-or-treat on October 29th. It's a Saturday. Bring, bring a blanket. It'll be probably cold, but bring a blanket, bring a lawn chair, and it'll be a lot of fun. So movie night right after trick-or-treat. We need to add that to the, I'm sure it's out there already on our village page, but we didn't talk about this Saturday, the Stormwater Day and such, and the grant we received, and trees, and all those good things, so would you mind talking about that?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, thanks.
This Saturday, we're going to meet up at Upper Waterworks at 10:00 AM to break into groups, pick up trash, because stormwater runoff pushes litter into the waterways and pass out some information to everybody about stormwater awareness, and this week is Stormwater Awareness Week, so every day I'll put some information on our Facebook page and then have Carolyn share it over Instagram and everything. And then hopefully pass out seedlings to everybody of native trees because they're hardier for the area and trees have a huge impact on stormwater runoff, and we're just good for the environment.
Awesome.
7:00 PM, the Turkey Festival starts.
I couldn't find it.
And it's, it's actually the 85th Annual Turkey Festival.
That's bananas.
I didn't know it was 85, we had the 85th year.
85th.
And I'm so excited my son gets to be part of it.
85 turkeys, right?
We just love our family. Right? 85th annual. Okay.
I also wanted to mention that it is 22 days until the election.
Yes.
So mark calendars, do some research, because there's a few different people and things on this ballot, including the levy, that we want to, you know, watch out for.
Absolutely.
I think it's, it's still going to be up at the church for all of Lake More's residents, so.
What day is starting on?
It's always on a Tuesday.
November 8.
November 8. I knew that.
Yeah. Okay. Yep, November 8.
Good. We good? Okay.
Mm-hmm.
That was it for council report, that was quite a bit, like I said. We have nobody signed up to appear before council.
Nobody appearing before council.
So we'll segue into one resolution under old business and that's Heather Anderson's and then new business by emergency, one from Nikki, Mrs. Coontz, sorry. So Ms. Anderson, go ahead.
All right, I would like to make a motion to adopt Resolution 7205-2022, a resolution accepting the amounts and rates and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the Summit County Fiscal Officer.
Any discussion, council? Okay, thanks Heather, thanks Sam. Roll call please.
Mrs. Cochran?
Yes.
Mrs. Coontz?
Yes.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Ray?
Yes.
Okay, Nikki, you're up.
Am I up? All right, I haven't read one in a while, guys.
You're out of practice.
I'm out of practice. Resolution number 7212-2022, a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Summa Care for employment health insurance coverage and a HRA with health equity from November 1st, 2022 through October 31st, 2023. But first, I would like to make a motion to dispense with the three reads.
I'll second that.
Thanks Nikki, thank you Laura. Any discussion on the emergency?
It was a great meeting.
It was a great meeting and then we have to pass a by emergency in order to not allow for discontinuance or a break in coverage for our employees, so that's why it's emergency, right?
Yep.
Right, right?
Emergency for, yeah.
Takes five, it's got to be unanimous tonight. Roll call please.
Mrs. Coontz?
Yes.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Ray?
Yes.
Mrs. Cochran?
Yes.
Good.
And I'll second the original motion.
Thank you Laura. Any discussion on the original motion? No, it was pretty, pretty good meeting.
Yeah.
Pretty easy to decide upon this one this year. Okay, anything? Roll call please.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Ray?